Okay, we can now move on to board member comments. And before anybody wants to comment, I just, for myself, and of course, on behalf of the board, Tim, welcome. Welcome back, I guess you might say, but welcome.
Should we sing?
Not going to sing, Tim, sorry. Any other board member comments? Anybody want to make comments before we move on?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to mention, it was really loud, sorry. I just wanted to mention something I had discussed with the administrators that I'd like to see our district consider adopting, which is a school bus tracking app in conjunction and cooperation with our bus company. There are many apps like this that already exist on the market, and we would need to investigate costs. But the benefits are that both parents and older children would know where their bus is and when it's set to arrive. And this would be really beneficial, obviously, in the winter and in bad weather. We could minimize the amount of time that students would need to wait for the bus in bad conditions, which would hopefully reduce calls to the district with issues about the status of a bus, and build a positive rapport with the community in regards to transportation. And I see this as, you know, these apps are similar to like when you use Uber or Lyft or order food from Grubhub. So the technology exists and the apps exist, and I'd like to see this investigated.
And Dave Hall presented a memo to me earlier this afternoon with that information.
Great.
So I'll have that. And I even said to Lori, we'll have this for the board in November since we got it this afternoon. So we have that. We have the costs, what it would take, what it would look like. It is an add-on to the VersaTrans product that we currently use for routing our buses. But yes, there's a cost. And, but yeah, Ally asked us to look into that. I thought it was a great idea. Mr. Hall did the investigative work. I got that memo this afternoon about all the details of it, and so I'll have all of it for you in November.
Thank you for looking into that so quickly.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? Okay. Exactly, yeah. There being none, I am told we don't have anybody signed up for public comments on the agenda items only. So we could move on to the, excuse me, the approval of the minutes. This is the minutes of the September sixth work session meeting, and I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the September 6, 2018 work session slash legislative meeting per the attached.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
I'll have to abstain.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a solicitor's report this evening?
No.
Okay. Olaf, are you flying solo over there? There's a student rep report.
I believe so.
It's all yours. If you can get close to the mic so we can hear you.
Good evening, every, oh, that was loud.
That's all right. That's great. Let it go. We can hear you.
Good evening, everyone. So now that school has begun, we're about a month or two into the school year, as you guys know. Numerous different clubs and events have been going on in the high school, just the high school alone, actually. There have been plenty over in the middle school as well. As we move into the fall, the senior students are preparing to move on to their careers following high school, including college, moving into unions, or different post-secondary destinations. In addition, to help prepare these students, the school so graciously has offered us these different opportunities to know what we're doing. So for example, there are different, there have been different arrangements where students can meet up with teachers and they can learn about how to apply for FAFSA, which is a student loan company, I believe. Yeah. So that's very assistant, especially if you don't get scholarships, for example, in a school. It can help you a lot to pay for post-secondary school. Additionally, as the season begins, the drama club has begun rehearsing for their stage rendition of the classic TV show, The Beverly Hillbillies, which I'm sure many of you know. It's a very funny comedy show.
You probably don't remember that. I do.
Oh, no, I watch that all the time. Plus, the music department is preparing for their annual fall concert that will be on October 17th in the middle school auditorium, which is right over there. The concert will feature the assorted music department groups, which would include the band, the orchestras, and the different choirs as well. Then finally, high school students are preparing for their annual homecoming dance, which will be next Saturday. Tickets went on sale all week this week. And then homecoming king and queen will be voted on next week by the students. It will be set up with a donation thing where if you would like to vote for someone, then you can donate a certain amount of money toward that student. And then, in addition to voting, you're also supporting the school funds. So I believe that is it.
Great. Great report. Thanks, Olaf. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to add one thing. You mentioned the FAFSA, and I'd like to encourage any college-bound senior who's thinking about it to definitely fill that out and apply, because many universities use that for grant and gift aid as well. So it is true, it's used for loans, but it also is required oftentimes for scholarships. So definitely fill it out and take advantage of whatever opportunities, you know, that you can to help with your education.
Good point. Thank you, Dr. Olaf. Thank you.
I'm glad we're, you know, taking some extra time and helping students with that.
Superintendent's report.
I actually have two.
All yours.
Amanda, we're going to do Points of Pride over there, or here? It's better over there? Okay. I'm just going to read the Public Enrollment Committee update from here, and then I'm going to go over there to run the Points of Pride, which is next. We had a Public Enrollment Planning Committee meeting on Thursday, no, it was last Wednesday. And I just want to kind of give everybody an idea where we are and what we're going to be looking at as we kind of go through this, the rest of this school year. So after Shelby Stuma's demographic study was received in 2015, the decision was made to redistrict several neighborhoods to address enrollment growth that was occurring in our predominately the McIntyre and Ross attendance areas. At that time, I made a public statement that our enrollment was forecasted to increase district-wide through the year 2025, and that we would once again need to address our student population growth within the next three to five years. We are currently in year three of our new boundary reconfiguration, and the district must review options to make decisions to meet the needs of our growing district. I began the committee meeting by welcoming everybody and thanking them for their interest in participation, and we reviewed our current enrollment numbers by school, by grade, by section, and we reviewed the historical yearly growths of our district. When reviewing the current enrollment versus building capacity, it is clear that our elementary building is operating on a K6 model and utilizing our current class caps, which we will soon meet or exceed capacity in one or more of our buildings. Our board policy of class size has enrollments in grades kindergarten and first grade at 23, second and third grade at 25 students. Fourth through sixth grade enrollments should not exceed 27 students. For the 2018-19 school year, we have zero classrooms available at High Cliff, one at Ross, three at McIntyre, and four at Westview. As we move students to the next grade level for 2019-20 and project a similar-sized kindergarten, we actually get space back to us. We will have two available classrooms at High Cliff, Ross, and McIntyre, and we will have five at Westview. These projections do not include students moving into or out of our district. Based upon this, it appears that we will be under our current configuration for 2019-20 school year, but we will need a contingency plan in the event one or more of our schools reach a point where they are over capacity. So the committee shared some ideas and options for addressing our space and capacity issues, including an increase of class size, half-day kindergarten, moving sixth grade to the middle school, reconfiguring our elementary model from a K6 to various other models like K2 and 3, 4, 5, 6, create additional spaces on our elementary schools by constructing additions at Ross, looking at ways to add space at High Cliff, or finding property within the district to build an additional building. I will explore and evaluate each of these options and any other option that's brought forth, and I will provide my complete report on the options to the Board of Education at our November 8 meeting. An enrollment planning committee meeting will be scheduled after the board reviews and discusses my report in November.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go to the podium for this one.
Matt, thanks for your, we got your information.
We had a lot of really good things happen to the school district in the month of September, and that's what this report is. This is our Prodigy's in Excellence Report for the month of September. Anyone?
Anyone? Yuler?
It works. There you go.
Little bit of a delay.
Put the dancing music on.
Congratulations, Joe Welsh. Middle school teacher Joe Welsh has been selected the 2018 National History Teacher of the Year by the Gilder Lerman Institute of American History. Welsh will be honored at a ceremony at Yale Club in New York City on October 10. For the first time, our elementary students are taking part in computer science classes as part of their six-day cycle. As the year progresses, they will be coding, programming, and in general, learning valuable soft skills such as problem-solving, teamwork, and communication. Students in various North Hills Elementary Schools took part in fall festivals and Johnny Appleseed Days as they combined learning with apple-themed activities. The College Board named 51 North Hill students AP Scholars following their outstanding performances on the college-level Advanced Placement exams. This is nearly 80% of the exam takers scored three or above on the exam's five-point scale, earning them college credits. Westview and Ross Elementary students heard from the children's advocate and award-winning author Trudy Ludwig during Author's Day activities. Ms. Ludwig spoke with each grade about friendship and social and peer issues during their day-long event. Our sports officiating and principals of coaching class hosted NCAA women's basketball referee Mike McConnell, who talked about sports officiating principles and spoke with our high school students about what it takes to be an official at such a demanding level, the benefits and challenges of the job, and how they could get started as a sports official. The North Hills Marching Band held their 58th Annual Festival in September, and a total of 10 bands participated in the event. High School History Club members held a voter registration drive during all of lunch periods in advance of our November general election. They plan to do another drive in the spring prior to the 2019 primary. North Hills took part in the Nationwide Start With Hello Week to roll out our new Sandy Hook Promise programs to students. Start With Hello helps students gain the skills they need to create a culture of inclusion and connectedness, and encourages them to reach out and include those who may be dealing with social isolation. Ross Township Police Department officers visited second graders at McIntyre Elementary, where they introduced students to three of the department's K9 officers. Students at High Cliff Elementary, McIntyre Elementary, and Ross Elementary participated in walking and running fundraisers to support their building's parent-teacher organizations. The North Hills School District will hold homecoming activities on October 12 at 7:00 PM at Martorelli Stadium. Community members and alumni are invited to attend as the homecoming court will be announced prior to kickoff at 7:30 PM when North Hills takes on Armstrong High School in varsity football. Each club, activity, and athletic team at the high school will be represented by a student representative and their escort. The Northland Library and North Hills School District will host a digital boot camp for parents on October 20 from 9:00 AM to noon at the Northland Library. Please sign up on the library's website. The session is entitled, "Your Child Has a Device? How Do You Keep Them Safe?" North Hills School District will hold a Be Smart Parent Meeting and Meet the School Police Meet and Greet on October 24 from 6:30 to 7:30 in the middle school LGI room. Please join us for a brief presentation about the Be Smart Campaign, as well as meet and greet with all of the district's new school police officers. Free childcare will be provided. Please join our Hands for Service Club and Student Council members in the high school's third annual Jake Wodowsky's Monster Dash 5K and Spooky Stroll on October 27 at North Park Boathouse. All proceeds will benefit the local chapter of Make-A-Wish and the Children's Hospital Foundation. And those were some of the exciting things that occurred for the district in the month of September. About as exciting as a computer not working.
That's right. Thank you, Dr. Manrinho.
That's all yours. That's for you.
We can now move on yet to our construction update. That would be Mr. John Thomas from Thomas &amp; Williamson.
So Lori called me the other day and said, hey, can you stop up and tell everybody what's going on with the Westview vestibule? Not a very big project, but certainly a lot of challenges getting that little thing put together. Whoop. Think we're fighting there, Jeff. Okay. So what is driving the progress and completion on the project, of course, is the deliveries of the materials. Now, you'll recall that in past years, we've done projects, we've done everything we could to use off-the-shelf materials, like when we did the McIntyre Edition, so that we didn't have any fabrication going on to slow down the process. Unfortunately, on the very small vestibule project, we didn't have that luxury. We had a skylight that had to be fabbed to fill in the hole in the vestibule roof. We had storefront that had to be fabricated, steel that had to be fabricated, and some doors and windows as well. So at this point, what's really driving the progress is the deliveries of those materials. The roofing and sheet metal trim is, has been available, has been ready to go since last week, just trying to fit it in between rainstorms. They started working the other day and had to stop. They can, it's only like a one or two-day job to get the roof on. And by the way, they are actually going to give you an entire new roof instead of a roof patch at no additional charge. We're looking to receive and install the hollow metalwork that goes through the front wall where the window is now. There will be a temporary door installed in that, and you'll be able to use that as temporary access until the final doors come. And at the same time, they'll hook up the access control. So you'll function in a temporary mode until the final pieces come in. The following week, we'll have the aluminum trim panels arrive and the installation of the raceways and boxes for the one lighting fixture that goes in it. The following week, we'll be receiving the aluminum storefront, and that's really what most of the vestibule is constructed of. The glazing will come along with that. That's the glass. The handrail is available now, but they won't install that until the storefront is in. And then, of course, sealing all the joints once that's installed. Following that, we'll have, the skylight is manufactured, but it's being painted. It's coming, I believe, from California. It's a special kind of skylight that fits back in the corner of the building and self-supporting. After the skylight's installed, you can put your permanent door in, install the light fixture in the unit heater, and then, last but not least, and this is, this is an issue throughout the whole construction industry, doors. Everybody's waiting for wood doors to arrive. I don't know why, but every job's doors are late. There's a couple doors that have to go in from the vestibule into the office area. I did provide a little sequence, a little write-up. I'm not going to read this whole thing, but basically what this describes is my people and Kevin Swindell finding a door that you have in stock that's going to be installed temporarily so you can operate the entry into the office even before the vestibule's totally enclosed. And just to give you an idea, a better idea of how this works, the two doors to the right, those are the existing front doors. Right now, the issue is you can go in those front doors and have, someone can have free access to the school. So even though you are buzzing them into those front doors, there's no constraint to prevent any further ingress. So the vestibule addition was constructed from the corner, almost out to the sidewalk. And the big challenge that made this project so complicated was, even though it's very small, was that your existing entry into the building is not handicap accessible. So we had to construct a handicap-accessible entrance in the captured vestibule. So it made for steel fabrication, sloping, concrete, et cetera. And then we had to get as much length as we could, which brought it the whole way out to the center of Jesse's window, which made it even trickier to join all the new construction up with the existing. As I said, you're, and this is another point of confusion, and I think a lot of people at the building don't really understand. There's only one side of the door that's going to be operational, and it's going to have the pass-through window in it, the bulletproof pass-through window, that when somebody arrives, they'll get buzzed in here, will be able to proceed through the vestibule, hand over their license, other credentials at the pass-through door. The other side of the door is opaque. It was originally opaque. You've asked that we change that to have glass in it so that the ladies in the office can have more daylight coming in. Once they have their credentials screened, they'll be able to go through the door, only at that point. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I understand what the timeline is now, but could you just provide everybody with some history about what caused the delays, because originally this project was supposed to be done in September?
Okay, actually, I just did, but I'll go through them again. So you have all of the materials that are coming from sometimes out of state, and those materials are being fabricated, and the deliveries to the contractor aren't coming quickly enough.
There were also permit issues as well, right?
Not really. We were able to start building without the permit.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to know, do you have a timeline of when you think this will be completed?
Actually, let me go back a slide. If you look to this slide here, is, can you guys read that over there? Okay. So the work is scheduled to be completed the week of, the work that we're looking at completing is that final installation of the door and the security film project will be complete week of 11/5.
11/5.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
I'm confused about what you just said about the permit. Why would we think it was a good idea to start building without a building permit?
Well, we thought we had an understanding that a permit wasn't going to be required because it was kind of a minimal project in nature. And there were some discussions going back and forth between the school district and the municipality, and somebody from the municipality went on vacation, and there was a verbal understanding that it was okay to move ahead. So they moved ahead with the concrete, which generally, if you know anything about the construction industry, it's not uncommon that you can proceed with your foundations before you have the building permit. And so that's what they did.
But then there was a holdup when they discovered that they were not?
There was a holdup that we didn't have the permit when they said, hey, you need a permit. And that unfortunately, well, that, I don't want to say fortunately, was a non-critical delay because we're waiting for the materials. So work was basically suspended while the, while the, there was no ongoing construction work because they're waiting for the materials to arrive.
So you're saying that delay didn't have any impact?
I'm saying it was a non-critical delay.
It did have an impact.
If you understand.
Well, this is really frustrating on the part of the school district, because, you know, we've spent a lot, an awful lot of time thinking about how to make our schools safer and invested a lot of time and energy, and this is something that we agreed on last spring. So, you know, it's really frustrating to sit here and hear that, okay, now it might be November by the time this is fully functional.
I mean, you keep saying it's a small project, but it's an important project, especially for the folks that come from there.
It's a very important project. I want to underscore, you know, the district is not employing, you know, we usually work for you in a construction management capacity. Everyone's aware of that, correct?
Right.
Okay. I'm not working in a construction management capacity on this project. We designed the vestibule for you, and I have some regular check-in that we do. We don't charge you for that. And I never charge you to come here in the evening to speak with you and bring you up to speed. But, I mean, you've been a long-standing client. We do whatever we can to help move things along, but we're not doing procurement management. We're not monitoring the purchase of the materials. When we were working on Ross, you might recall, we had a lot of trouble getting metal panels there. I sent my people to Ohio to go to the factory and walk the floor and make sure everything was being fabricated. You didn't hire me to do that here, and it's understandable why you didn't, because my management fee would be more than the cost of the project. Yes, Mr. Nudie?
I don't think people understand the scope of work here. This is design and build, okay? Was it March or April we approved the project? You had to design it. You had to get it out to bid, find a contractor. Contractor came in, start doing the work. First thing that had to be done was the roof, I believe. Is that correct?
No, the first thing that had to be done was they had to dig out the soil where the new slab went.
But with the slab, and then you had to do the roof. They laid in the roof by rain. Then you had to come in and get the framing in. You get the framing in, you can't do the glass until you have the framing in to make the measurements to get the appropriate glass. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So all that is delay. And if you haven't understood manufacturing and building, you could understand that easily. So that's all I have to say.
No, I, trust me, I wish it was going faster, too. I wouldn't have to be sending my people up there every week to check on the contractors. That's coming out of my pocket. I'm not coming to you asking you for it, but it's, in many cases, it's people that the contractor has contracted with, and they're not delivering quickly. And it's not an uncommon thing in the industry right now. Now, like I said, in past years, we've been able to navigate around the delivery problem by buying all off-the-shelf materials, like the McIntyre Project, which is a building that's built almost entirely of off-the-shelf metal studs, which is almost unheard of. And that was, that was done to make sure that we weren't going to be victimized by a manufacturing delay. I don't feel as though we had that luxury here. We set out, actually, to design this as a prefabricated structure so that there wouldn't be a lot of construction on site. There's really very little construction on site. I hope everybody's aware of that. It's really installation as opposed to construction. Anyone else?
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we can now move on to education, the fun stuff. Mrs. Mathis?
Thank you. We have two items under education this evening. The first is a request for the board to approve the academic calendar for the 2019-2020 school year, as per the attached. Highlights would include, the first day for teachers would be August 13. The first day for students would be August 20. The last day for students would be May 28, and graduation would be May 29. Second item is a request for the board to approve the acceptance of the Ready to Learn Grant. The purpose of the Ready to Learn Grant is to support research-based best practices in education. This grant will offset the costs associated with providing a high-quality, full-day kindergarten program aligned with the state's current academic standards, and the grant award is in the amount of $393,030. So the superintendent recommends that the board approve education items 1 and 2. I personally have some comments on item 1. We move to discussion.
Let's, you're going to make a motion, at least, that we entertain the motion, right?
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, Mrs. Mathis, you're up first.
Thank you. First, I just want to say, due to the nature of our schedule this month, this is a work session and a legislative session as well. So normally, there would be a work session where we would present the calendar. We would discuss it. The public would have a little bit more time for feedback on it, and because we're going to be traveling to the PBSA conference at the end of, or in the middle of October, this is also a legislative session, so that doesn't allow as much time for public review for the calendar. And so just going forward, I'd like to be presented with some alternative options for the calendar. That include a dedicated spring break, as well as possibly a later start date. This is some feedback I've heard from the community, and I'd like to begin this process a little bit earlier in the near, a little bit earlier in the year next year, so we could possibly be presented with some different options to evaluate the calendar.
Are there any other comments? Nudie?
On item 2, the Ready to Learn Grant, what is the source of funding for that?
The state.
Okay. I, in the future, I'd appreciate if you identify what the sources of funding are for the grants. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. All in favor to adopt the motion of the two education items?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Opposed? Opposed?
I'm voting against item number one, but for item number two.
I am also the same.
Sandy and Ellie, two noes, but that's just for item number one, right?
Correct.
Okay. You got that, Lori?
Yes, I did.
I'd like to add, I am voting yes for both of them because at this point in the year, I think we do need to move the calendar forward, but I would also like to see, you know, for long, more time for conversation on the calendar. So I think maybe if we could start the calendar, we always, we run, we often run into the PSBA, so maybe if we start the calendar a little sooner, we could have that conversation next year.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, so you got those that voted a and a, yea and a? Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mathis, let's move on to athletics and activities. That would be Ms. Cazara.
I have three field trips. The inaugural members of the history club would like to travel to Washington, D.C. from March 15th to 18th to, I believe the words were, immerse themselves in history. The CADD club would like to go to the BMW factory in Spartanburg, South Carolina, November 28th and 29th. And the band and chorus had previously requested to go to Washington, D.C. for the Cherry Blossom Festival, but now they are changing their request to go to New York City because of, there were some changes in, they weren't able to get the academic, the musical, educational, and cultural experience that they were looking for in D.C. as a whole, so they were going to change the trip to New York. So...
So there's more cultural and...
I believe the availability. As a former D.C. resident, there's plenty of culture there.
I can actually address that a little bit. The premiere piece for the band in D.C. was, there was a big public venue for them to perform that was a parade, but there were lesser opportunities for the orchestra and the choir. And so now, because this is a combined trip, you know, the idea was, some of the opportunities that they thought would be available, you know, weren't turning out to be, in the judgment of the directors, as great an opportunity for the other ones. Unlike last year when they went to Disney, everybody had, there were great opportunities for everybody. So by going to New York, they were able to secure an opportunity that is just going to really give more kids a chance to participate and just be a better quality experience, you know, kind of for all of the groups. So it was more about, it's kind of a coordination thing, and it could be, very well be a D.C. trip later, you know, it just had more to do with coordinating all the venues and making sure that everybody's experience, you know, was going to be at a really high level.
Yeah, and I think there's enough overlap with the kids in those groups that it's great that they go on a combined trip. I think that's really nice.
Yeah, exactly.
Just so everybody knows, the agenda says North York. They're going to New York.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have said that. The details indicate that it's New York.
I think that's what threw Mr. Wogus off. He wasn't real sure what was going on. He was going to be...
Very exciting.
I've been to North York. It's a lot of fun.
The Amish.
Excuse me, I noticed on all these field trips that we're responsible now for paying the subs and the nurses. In the past, the groups had to pay for that. We didn't. So apparently that changed?
Mm-hmm. I don't know that we always had them paid in the past.
They did.
Are you sure?
Uh-huh.
I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware that we always didn't pay. Okay.
We didn't pay, but now we're paying for the subs and the nurses. Can we look into that?
If you want to charge the kids more to go on the trips, we can certainly look into that.
If you want to charge them more.
I don't want to charge them anything. Let them go.
I mean, I would argue that the teachers have their, you know, the days that they can take off, and they're not actually taking off those days. They're using them for the student's enrichment and, you know, the cost of a substitute to allow a teacher to go on that kind of trip seems, to me, to be worth it, certainly. But, I mean, certainly we can look into it. Absolutely.
Fine. I don't know why we started paying again.
We're trying to keep the cost down for the kids, to be honest with you. I know, I'm not saying that's the reason, but part of it...
It's a good reason.
It's a good reason, sure.
The superintendent recommends, if nobody else has anything, the superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve athletics and activities, items one through three.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. A.W. Beatty, Mr. Nudie, it appears we don't have anything unless you have something you'd like to add.
I have a couple of comments. Today, I attended the principal's meeting at A.W. Beatty. It was a conference held by the principal of A.W. Beatty, invited basically all the principals and guidance counselors for a conference on, an overview of what they're doing at Beatty. I was very impressed with what's happening over there. You know, when I came on the board ten years ago, maybe?
Seven.
And I think some of the older board members would visualize Beatty as something like an alternative education school.
Sure, not anymore.
So, and I'm glad to admit, in the last five years, they've really turned the philosophy around there. They're tailoring the courses of study to professions that the economy needs, and they're also looking down the road at what's going to be needed in five or 10 years to develop the curriculum for them. So I'm very, very happy with what I experienced today. And part of that was, the principal, Jason Watkins, took over last year, and he gave a presentation of what Beatty is doing, and they instituted a thing that's called 360 Degrees, 360 Degrees Outside or Outdoors Program. It's an after-school function where they go out, go on ski trips, hiking, fishing, all type of additional extracurricular activity, and the, it's all being chaperoned by the faculty. The faculty are doing it for nothing. It's a very, very, very nice program. And I, when I was there, I was thinking, this is something that should be presented to the operation, operating committee at Beatty. And so the operating committee members could get a better idea of what's happening and what the future is at Beatty. And then I thought, and I just talked to Dr. Manarino, and I think we should invite him in to do a little presentation for us to get an idea of what's happening at Beatty.
I'll see if he can be here in November. I'll see if he can be here in November.
Okay, all right. And the other thing is, the NOCT performance reports were out from last year, and 40% of what, we had 15 students took the exam, six, and six, a total of 13 placed advanced or competent, so that's a total of 48%, and only two out of the attendance scored in the basic, and we had none below the basic, so...
Thank you. Great report. Thanks.
There was one more thing that the Beatty J.O.C. did on last Thursday night at their meeting, and that was that they've decided to dedicate their conference center to Arlene Bender, and they're going to name that conference center after her. They're going to do this on the December 13th board meeting. That's traditionally a time whenever Beatty invites all of the board members out to Beatty for their holiday dinner. So if you could all put December 13th on your calendar, and hopefully you could make not only that dinner, but then that night at the board meeting where they could make that presentation about dedicating that conference center, and they're going to name it the Arlene J. Bender Conference Center at A.W. Beatty. So I thought that was a really nice move. Yeah, yeah, you'll get, you'll get an invitation from Eric about that night. They do a really nice dinner for the board members, and that's all of the 81 board members in their nine districts. And so it would be nice if all of you could get there, if you could hold that on your calendar.
And also, you get a point set up.
And you get a point set up. Tell me a tin of cookies.
Thank you. We'll have Jim Bender come too. Okay. All right, thank you. Again, Mr. Nudie, it was a great update. Thank you so much. We can now move on to personnel, and that would be Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Wogus. Personnel items are considered executive session by the board, and therefore, the superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve personnel items one through five.
A second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Also, if I may, the North Hill School Board and the administration would like to acknowledge the 33 years of excellent service as a substitute teacher provided by Jean Hirschman, and so we wish Jean the very best in her retirement.
Absolutely. Congratulations to you. Great, thank you. Community, yeah, community intergovernmental relations. Mrs. Reed, doesn't look like we have anything under, I don't know if you have anything you want to add?
No, we have nothing, in essence, to vote on. However, I want everybody to know that we did meet with Mr. Hall in regard, and Mr. Withersall, in regard to Ross Township coming to us, wanting to get involved in tax assessment appeals. They believed that we should look for, we should move forward doing that, that there's money there for them. And we listened to both sides, and we made a decision, we're not getting, we're just keeping it the way it is. We're not going after residential property.
Okay, thank you.
That's basically it.
Thank you. Mr. Nudie, looks like we don't have anything under policy unless you, is there anything you want to add?
Well, the, I guess the hot item right now is the graduation requirement legislation that's slowly moving through the House. It's Senate Bill 1095. And I'd like to thank the members of the administration and the board members that did send emails to the representatives that did move it from the floor. It is now in the appropriations committee because it looked at the funding aspects of it. It has to go back to the House floor for final vote, and then over to the Senate for reconciliation, and hopefully pass it this year. The only problem is, I think there are, the Senate only has four voting days left this year, and the House has seven, I guess, so. And if it doesn't happen this year, it goes back and has to go through the whole mill again next year, so we, maybe if we could just get another email out to the representatives and have them, and senators, and have them move this bill through so it's finished by the end of the year.
I received a nice letter from Adam Ravenstall, because I emailed him in regard to support that bill.
So it's early October, they have four days left, and then they're done for the year?
Yes. Well, it's election year.
Okay, good. That's a great job. All right. Sorry. All right, we can move on to finance. Dr. Nolish?
Okay, thank you. We have six items for action. The general fund bills, the construction fund bill, which includes the final payment for McIntyre Project, capital project fund bills, food service fund bills, budget transfers, and payroll for the month of September. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve finance items one through six.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
There's also two informational items, if you want to review, the revenue summary for 2017, 18, as of July 2018. Those are the unaudited figures. And the summary related to that, the summary of revenue and expenditures as of July, for 17, 18, as of July 2018.
Dave, not to put you on the spot, but I looked, I didn't, nothing seemed to jump out. Was there anything there that...
No, I think we're in really good shape.
It's pretty much what we forecasted.
I think we expected.
Okay. Which looked like the way to me, too. Thanks. All right, support services, that would be Mrs. Spade.
Thank you. I have four articles here. The first one is that the board approve a grant award up to $25,000 from women for a healthy environment for lead in water testing and...
Remediation?
Remediation per attached.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
I have to find this on my computer. My computer's a little goofy, like me. Where'd it go? It's coming. No, I don't want that. Sorry about this.
That's all right. What are you looking for, the grant, Dee?
That the board of directors award the bid for dual-purpose copy paper to contractor Paper Group and Company at their low bid of $21,882. Third, bread. As soon as this comes up. You believe this? That the board of directors award the bid for bread for the remainder of the year, 2018 to 2019 school year to Schwab's Baking Company. Fourth, security cameras. That the board of direct... Where'd it go? Where'd it go, Pat?
We're rejecting, we're being asked to reject that.
Yeah, we're being asked to reject that. That the board of direct... This machine don't like me.
There you go.
Okay. That the board of directors rejects all bids received for security cameras.
Can I ask why?
We're going to rebid the project.
Yeah. I had talked to Mr. Hall, and he had mentioned that too many cameras were put out for bid, and we need less cameras now, so we're going to rebid. Is that proper?
Correct.
Okay, the superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve support services items one through four.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. I just would like Ms. Spade to confirm that the bread meets all of the federal standard guidelines?
We were told that it absolutely does.
Thank you.
I'm more bread works bread.
Is, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that pretty much covers the agenda items. We have one left, one item left, which is public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anybody who would wish to address the board at this time prior to adjournment? From our standing room only crowd. Okay, great, thank you. I will, motion to adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.